Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, good afternoon.
Ellen, did we hear from anyone that they may not be here today?
Regina was the only one that said she might not be able to be here. She was traveling for work and she said she was gonna try to call in. But I'm sure she's gonna be able to do that.
Alright, thank you. Hey, Tom.
Hello, Greg.
Guess you had an interesting meeting last night.
Yeah, yeah. First one for me to override.
Yeah, ten years I was never involved in one.
Yeah. I hope that's the only one. But you never, you know, it's the process, so.
In ten years, I only had to break a tie once, too, so.
Yeah. So it's 2020, anything can happen. Crazy year.
Well, it's almost over.
Yeah. I'm looking forward to a new year.
Yeah, let's see, John and Jeff, are you there? Jeff Nelson? Maybe? I see their names.
He stepped away.
Well, let's hope they step back.
Yeah.
If they did, we could get started.
John, Jeff, are you with us?
There's John.
Hi, everybody.
Hey. And we're just waiting on Jeff Nelson. Nope, wait a minute here, this might be Jeff. There's Jeff.
One more button, I didn't see it in the beginning.
That's okay.
I don't use this enough, I guess.
Always one more button.
These computers are great, but they are constant lesson in learning.
Yeah, well, I spend my life on Zoom, so. Someday, this too shall end, I hope.
Yeah. Well, I just finished some other things with my daughter down in North Carolina, so I've been back and forth and using the phone and the computer and sending emails and talking things through, so then all of a sudden, I don't have a microphone on.
Well, that happens. At least the sun is trying to come out, so. Alright, well, I think I, oh, excuse me, the meeting of the City Planning Commission order. I believe you received the minutes from Leanne Jordan for the October and November meetings. Hopefully you had a chance to review them. Can I have a motion to accept them?
Still moved.
Next, Jeff, can I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mike. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And then I believe we had one official public comment, and I think Jennifer, you were gonna read that to us, please?
We did, yes. It's regarding the 5G small cell item on the agenda. It reads, question for the Jamestown Planning Commission. Concerning an ordinance potentially approving 5G infrastructure, I appeal to you to seriously look at the study done by the state of New Hampshire on the implementation of 5G. After a year-long study conducted with the resources of the state of New Hampshire, the state decided to postpone the implementation of 5G. A much safer alternative to 5G is available via fiber optics, which Senator George Borello is advocating and for which money is available. The residents of Jamestown and even surrounding areas will be much better off if the city ups for hardwiring through fiber optics. A considerable amount of data on the dangers of 5G is available, which I would be happy to supply to the commission if it is interested. Below, please find my article, which was printed in the Jamestown Post Journal, and that comes from Roy Harvey. He did not provide his, his address, he just provided a phone number.
Right, thank you, Jennifer. And he did provide the letter that I guess was published in the Jamestown Post Journal. And, yeah, and when I saw that, I reached out to him, I called him, left a voicemail, he has not gotten back to me. And then because he brought up Senator Borello's name in his message to us, I have since called the Senator's office and I talked to one of his folks who works out of the Ole Miss office to see what he knew about the reference to what Senator Borello was working on and how it might relate to 5G and he knew that the Senator was working on making broadband available in rural areas. But he had no idea this was being offered as a replacement for 5G. But I made the point of calling the Senator's office and I'm still waiting to hear from Mr. Harvey, so I just wanted to make sure that you knew that not only did we receive the communication, but I reached out to both of them. And obviously, that's the second thing on the agenda, so we can hold off on that. If it's okay with everyone, and then move on to the first thing.
I just, I just also want to clarify that is, that is related to the agenda item, the agenda item is technically the towers and the infrastructure, it's not the, it's not the technology itself.
Right.
Just in terms of maintaining those distinctions.
But both things are discussed in the ordinance, so I, you know, I think he's tried to stop the ordinance for what it's worth. At least that's the way I read it, but I haven't had a chance to speak with him, so.
Yeah, my understanding was that the ordinance was about the design and placement of the towers, not, not whether 5G was going to be, going to be available.
Right, but if we were to follow his recommendation, his recommendation is not to have any ordinance, so that we can stop it, so.
Right.
Yeah, I, and just out of, because I didn't know who this guy was, and I asked the Senator's office if they've had communication with him, and apparently they have on some other issues, but not on anything to do with 5G, so they said that if they knew anything else, they would get back to me. And again, I, I reached out to the Senator and Mr. Harvey just because I thought, well, he brought it up. He mentioned the Senator, least I can do is try to find out what he's trying to say and what the Senator is trying to say, so. And we may hear more from either the Senator's office or from Mr. Harvey.
I know, I tried to find some information if I could on the computer and tried a couple of other phone calls and stuff to because it's a, pretty much a new topic, if you will, the 5G is being talked about a lot. See if there were some concerns that were outstanding, but I just really couldn't find anything, or
Yeah.
So I don't know where it's coming from, but it is a concern in the sense to me, sitting on the planning commission, the, the more we know, maybe not fully understand, but the more we know, the more, or the more we're informed on it, the better decisions we can make.
And I would agree with you, Jeff, and that's why while I was trying to finish up some classes on the semester, I was making those phone calls to see what I could find out in addition to what he put in the letters, so. So, obviously, that's another major topic of concern, it's the second item on the agenda, but I wanted to turn to the first one, which was the mitigation proposal with respect to the Arcade Building. And I know I heard that from some of you folks. Is there anyone here from home leasing today?
No.
Okay. So you all should have a copy of the mitigation proposal.
I have it here, I can share it on the screen if that's useful, too, so let me know.
Okay, yeah, if anybody would like to see it on the screen, just let us know. But hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at it. In the interest of disclosure, I had a meeting with folks from home leasing, just me and them. And then I talked to Ellen and Crystal, and I think several of you weighed in on this. We're not acting on the mitigation proposal this afternoon, but I wanted to make sure that now that we have it, because it was dated November 17th, that we discuss it so that we, this doesn't imply approval if we go to home leasing and say this is acceptable. It just says, if we do say it's acceptable, then they can get on with the rest of their work, which, you know, this is a project that is gonna consume time and energy, and there really was no point in them doing that unless we could at least preliminarily say, yeah, that this looks good and it can be part of the project proposal. So I have no problems with this. But, you know, I'm just one person, and when I talked to them, I told them that I had no problems with this and the staff, but, you know, that, that doesn't mean that I'm committing us to anything because the commission itself needs to discuss the mitigation proposal. And if you remember back to the Gateway Project, which was and is a much bigger project, one of the things that took up a lot of time and energy on our part was trying to get a satisfactory mitigation proposal, and all of you in some manner were involved with that, we finally got it done. So we put this up right up front, because there's no point in them or us putting in a lot of time and energy into this if we don't find the mitigation proposal acceptable. And what I appreciated about them was that they were responsive to that and understood that it was a better way to talk about this right up front before we go any further, so. I guess what I would do right now is just open it up to discussion and comments from anybody on the commission as well as our council liaison. As well as our staff, too, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to leave the staff, so.
Greg, I'm reading a $500 donation as a mitigation for each new unit created, is that correct? I am wondering how, what you think of that, and if that is a fair amount?
Well, it says, home leasing proposes a $500 donation as mitigation for each new unit created or a total of $18,000. And we have suggested that they make the donation to the Chicago County Land Bank. You know, again, the adopted city neighborhood plan just calls for a substantial decrease, but it's open to our interpretation. It never specified another, a number, excuse me, mainly because these projects are gonna be different in scale, and also some of these projects, like this one, may not happen if we can't work with home leasing. Now, it doesn't mean that we have to accept that figure, but that's why I wanted to talk about it. $18,000, I don't think would even tear down one house, given the cost of asbestos and asbestos remediation, but maybe a small house.
That was my thinking, too, that that wasn't a great deal of money, but.
I, I have a question on that as to whether the donation has to go to demolition efforts, or can it go to stabilization efforts?
I, if the donation is made to the County Land Bank, then my understanding is that it doesn't have to go, but it does say here for use in their demolition programs to help address vacant housing conditions, so it wouldn't have to say that. It could be along, it could be used by the County Land Bank to either demolish or stabilize.
Okay.
And we could also recommend increasing the amount. And I'm open to that discussion, but I think, I think Jeff Lehman, you know, made a good point that this project is gonna be difficult to do. There seems to be a good effort here to accommodate veterans and others. I think John brought up the connection to the veterans.
Yeah.
And so I think the project overall is worthwhile, and the advantage of the way the neighborhood plan is written, since it never specifies units or numbers, it allows the planning commission to be flexible as long we, as long as we have a rational basis for why we're doing this. And one of that could be that this looks like a good project that otherwise just isn't gonna get done, but that doesn't mean that we can't suggest, well, how about X amount of money? So, and also, when Ellen mentioned about stabilization and not just demolition, and I'm making a little note here.
Well, I look at the cost of this, it doesn't happen, the cost of demolishing the building or the sea, you know, that's.
Right, if this project doesn't go through, at some point, the city is gonna be struck, stuck with a very big bill. Now, in fairness, you know, to tear it down, that argument was also made to us by the Gateway people, and that's a perfectly valid argument. You know, if we don't go ahead with this project, then you're gonna get stuck with tearing it down. And that's a valid point. Now, when we had several years of discussion with Gateway, we recognized that, but we still did everything we could, as you all know, to make that project better than I think it was when it started. So, but doesn't mean we can't do that with this as well. We can make it better as we move along. And I think the first step in fairness to them is the mitigation proposal, because they talk about what this is gonna cost. And I think they're making a fair argument that if we go too far with this, this project will not happen, and so again, I'm open to comments, changes. I like the idea that Ellen suggested that it not just be used for demolition, but it could be used for stabilization.
I'm comfortable with it.
Well, yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
I'm comfortable with the amount, I think Ellen's suggestion is great, that's my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was curious about, people's opinions on that amount. I, it seemed fair, but I don't, you know, but then, like you said, Greg, how many, you might, with $18,000, you might tear down three quarters of a building, but, but, you know.
But that's why Ellen's suggestion of maybe using it for stabilization of existing housing is one.
That's a good point.
And even 18,000 still isn't gonna go that far. But it's a effort to be in compliance with the neighborhood plan right up front, recognizing that this project is gonna be difficult, it's gonna be expensive, and if we don't think the project's a good idea, then we could, we can say that, but I think the first step they need from us is, can you live with this mitigation plan so that we can put the work into maybe moving this along? So, again, I'm open to any comments, suggestions.
I love the idea of the project.
I think it would benefit the city and downtown, and would also benefit folks who don't have permanent residence, especially a lot of veterans. There isn't a lot of things about this project that are bad. I know, Jeff Nelson, you brought up some stuff in the email that you sent out, and I didn't want to ignore those concerns. But I don't know, did you want to talk about what you brought up, Jeff?
There's a number of things that trouble me about the housing is, in housing questions. And part of it comes from just experience in developing housing projects. And when I look at, at the downtown, and especially thinking about housing, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of housing in the downtown now, it's much more of a, a place to live now than it is a place that it used to be when, when I was a kid, and it was a place to shop. And so it's changed a lot. When you get down on the hill instead of up on the flats, and for people that you're, at least sounds like some of them might be, have various kinds of handicaps and other things, it bothers me a little bit about putting it there on the hill. When it comes to possible noise, we still have the train system there. It was noisy in the buildings, and one of them, of course, has been taken down, but it was noisy in those buildings when I was a kid, if a train went by. I don't know how that really affects things. It, the owners of the buildings were selling shoes and things like that, didn't mind at that time, because it didn't really affect their business. How it affects somebody living there full-time is another question. Um, it's kind of away from a lot of things if there are people that are really quite handicapped by injuries or something of that nature. So there are things that I really am not excited about as of yet. There are things that could be overcome. The question is, though, is there really enough money there to do it? I know that a project like that, and even the one that's being done over on Water Street is, they're good projects, and I've, I've done a few projects using low-income housing tax credits, too. But one of the concerns that I have had when I've looked at different projects and things that have been done, it seems like we're more using tenants to solve a problem of getting a project done, which gives a great return to investors. Having taken advantage of those investments that I was involved in and put together and invested in, I can understand why it's good, and it's especially good if it's a rehab. And so I just kind of wonder, is it really coming, is it coming together for, really for people? I think it can come together well for investment. I think it can come together well as far as making the site better. I'm just not sure that all of the different pieces that go to putting it together are melding as well. So.
Well, and, and those are all valid points, Jeff, I guess, and I, and I'm not trying to ignore those. That's one of the reasons why I wanted you to comment on it. But I guess my first question would be, is, how do you, assuming that all that stuff can be worked out, and I know that's the biggest assumption, how do you feel about the mitigation proposal as it is written?
Well, the way it sounded when it came in, it's a lot of money being spent in the building, but it's not hard to understand that it was all gonna be pretty much spent in the building.
Right.
And mitigation, I think, is an important factor in this, whether it is so much for this type of housing and for that group of people. I'm not as sure about that, you know, that it's a problem. My experience with having particularly elderly tenants and other things in housing and in family housing is that I tend to favor putting people where other people are around that can help the people exist. And it's not just to do them favors, to fix their bed or whatever like that, I mean, it's also to just be people to be able to meet with, talk with, and so on, and a neighborhood gives you that option a lot more clearly than being set off in a sense, even far, kind of far away from even the downtown housing as far as solving that problem. I guess I found that through the work that I've been doing and the projects that I've done, I slowly slid more to be concerned about the tenants than I am about the building and in the location. You know, if, if it works well for the tenants, I think it can work well for other purposes. If the tenants are ignored just for the financial aspects of things, whether it's to the city or anything else, I think it can be a problem. I haven't had enough information yet to really say where my position and thinking solely is.
Yeah, and, and again, I appreciate all those comments, Jeff, I would probably agree with everything you said. Excuse me, one of my cats decided to join us, she has a keen interest in housing.
I've got a dog laying next to me.
It's the problem with working at home, but anyways, it's not for me to put, put forward what the project's gonna accomplish. You know, that's gonna, we're gonna have to do a lot more work on this as they come back to us, but I know they're not gonna come back to us with this project unless we can say, okay, it looks so far that your mitigation proposal might be acceptable to the commission with maybe some changes. But that basically, it's okay. The, the thing that I would point out is, you know, they do talk in here about putting in an ADA accessible ramp. They do talk about creating a community room for those, and, and it's opening housing options for veterans in cooperation with the mission, which is, you know, just down the street on First Street. And then, you know, I, when you think about walkability downtown, for those folks who live there who can walk, you go under the Main Street Viaduct and you buy the medical center on the River Walk. You're by the drugstore at Rite Aid, you buy Big Lots, you're right, what, what there is of retail downtown, you know, I'm probably on a dollar value in sales, most of it is in Brooklyn Square. And so if, if they're physically able to move, it's actually really accessible, it's just a short walk for those people don't have mobility problems. So I think that they're close to a lot of stuff.
And the River Walk itself is a nice feature being.
Yeah, and the River Walk is a form of recreation, just for walking, fishing, whatever you might want to do, it's.
I just went through there again last Saturday.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I understand the noise from the trains, but, you know, we just don't have that many trains coming through anymore, and you know that, every once in a while, I hear one. And I'm a train fanatic, so I like that, but I. So I like that, but I I I think this project has a lot of stuff going for it.
I'm kind of in a mixed bag because of. I guess just be from experiences too. I did a rehab on a school to for ill elderly housing.
Right.
I know it was a lot more expensive. But as I drive by it at different times and I'm up there, I think, man, it was really nice. This worked out well.
And uh, every time I go by that old school building, I'm glad it's there and it seems to be working and. Um, it's kept kept up and people have a place to live and um. Jeff lives closer to me than I do, but I not noticed any real problems there. And and you know, when you said it's a mixed bag, I think all of these projects are always a mixed bag. There's no perfect solution. But I'm not sure we're going to get one as good as this one. Again, and it's not my job to sell sell their proposal. Uh, I'm just sort of playing devil's advocate and.
A lot that I I like about it too, that and that. Being quite honest, and I've always enjoyed doing rehabs on buildings.
Right.
You know, when I've been doing it personally and it's it's fun. It can be a lot of fun.
And it, you know, if that building is more attractive, it might induce other investment.
It might, and I think that.
I mean, it's it's always a gamble.
Right, and but you always got to be trying to look. I think no matter what. Part you play in these. Kinds of projects, you've got to be trying to look at not just the building. You've got to be looking at the broader picture.
Absolutely.
And and I'm, as I say, I'm not against it. It's just thoughts that I have and reactions to it. And like I said in my writing. I had deep concern about the project is the impact on people. Over on Water Street and I'm more concerned about kids than I am adults.
Right.
I think that we we spend neighborhoods where you have a diversity of people. Is an important thing in the growth of children.
Well, and I guess what I'm asking right now, we're not going to take a vote on this, but I guess I'm looking. For comments and if there's a consensus. That we can go back to home leasing and say, we thoroughly discussed your mitigation proposal. We embrace it in spirit and we want to make a couple of changes, which you know, one is Ellen's suggestion about stabilization. We could make a suggestion about the change in a dollar amount, uh, see if they want to still go ahead. I I, you know, I think we're open to all of that.
One of um. I mean, one of my. You know, thoughts about the gateway loss and one of the things I liked about it is that it offered a lot of services in-house to residents. Um, and maybe if they can't increase a dollar amount for the mitigation, they can work towards other programs that would benefit the community. Um, that are maybe more affordable for them, you know, even job training. You know, um, you know, life skills, stuff like that. To help benefit some of the residents that are living there or even around the community. I'm not real sure that they are as community centered as they. You know, maybe think that they are. Uh, they, from my looking at at the stuff that they want to do, I don't know if they've really contacted any. Community organizations or in what other ways do they support the residents that live there? There will also be a benefit to, you know, the city of Jamestown. I think the dollar amount for the mitigation is low. I wish we had a formula that we could, you know, plug into. To where there was some sort of um, ratio for for what would what is needed. If you look at, you know, our current population decline over the last fifty years. Um, you know, we're hurting. We have a, we have a lot of housing and maybe that housing is in really poor condition. Um, but it still exists. And so, you know, helping them understand. How essential it is that we don't increase our net housing and that we've had. You know, studies and we have adopted policies saying that we're not going to increase our net housing because it's. You know, a detriment to the housing stock that's in the city. Um, is important for them to understand. And if they really want to help support our community. You know, maybe they'll be willing to work with us more in that regard on either renovating housing or stabilizing neighborhoods, even if it's right around. Um, the Arcade Building. Um, I don't know if they'll come up anymore in in funds, but maybe we can, you know, change it a little bit. So they can do that for those funds and also provide services.
Well, they do talk about providing supportive housing and we could ask them, what do they mean by that? What are the supports that they're going to provide for, especially because they're aiming this, I think, at veterans. Uh, who don't have any other options because we do have a homeless problem in Jamestown. It's just not that visible. But listening to your remarks, one of the questions I might have for them is, well, you talk about permanent supportive housing. Well, what kind of support are you talking about other than the community room and an accessible ramp? What kind of supports, you know, so what community groups are you working with? I I think they've talked to the veterans and the homeless mission. But we could ask them to specify that a little more.
And what long-term services do they do they provide? I mean, some of those services, I know they they can be very um, expensive and and timely, but the benefit they have to the residents. You know, can be a greater benefit to the city than just simply, you know, the mitigation. Um, I mean, ideally for this project, I think we should, you know, at least be able to tear down five or six, um. You know, properties, um, but the expense, you know, probably.
Problem that is I, I think that's so expensive.
But I think we're gonna, the city's going to have to do it anyhow, whether um, you know, I'm sure, I don't know how many cit- Properties there are right now that are on the list, but it's probably quite a few.
Quite a few.
You know, and so the more funds that we have to help support that, the better off and the more stable neighborhoods will be.
Well, and as some people will say, and I agree with this, uh, we have to remember. That downtown itself is a neighborhood, especially because of what Jeff said about how, like in many cities down. Towns are becoming places where people live and not necessarily where they shop. Although we still have retail, uh, but if we think of downtown as a neighborhood. Then uh, revitalizing and saving the Arcade Building, which is a significant structure. Does help, I think, stabilize the downtown neighborhood. So if they can pull that off, I think that does bring about neighborhood stabilization. Because again, otherwise, city's going to get stuck with the cost of tearing it down and I think that's a valid argument. So um. I I have no problem going back to them and saying, look, we had a discussion. And we would like to know what kind of support services you're going to provide for the people to move in there. Is it going to be long term? Who are you working with? I think that's a perfectly reasonable question. And as I said earlier, we can go back and raise the amount, you know, uh, and like a thousand instead of five hundred.
I I I also just want to offer, I think it can be a little tricky. If there is um, too much of a um, a contingency of. Of their project with demolition of properties. Um, just in the long view of the legacy of the project. And so regardless of how the project works out. Um, you know, if in fifty years it's seen as a big boondoggle, or if in fifty years it was the best choice ever. Um, if it's attached to, well, they did this because they. They they had to provide money for demolition and demolition is just. Literally a destructive act. And so I think we want to limit our our. Our options in terms of prioritizing destruction over creation kind of thing.
And I wouldn't mind if the money was even used for, you know, stabilization efforts or or other programs, but I mean, yeah, I think that. Both are probably beneficial, probably maintaining buildings is more beneficial to the city than. Demolition for sure.
Totally, yeah.
This would preserve and maintain a significant building in a historic district.
One of the things, if I might interrupt, one of the things I think is very important in this though too. And you're looking at the, let's say, the neighborhoods. When where mitigation takes place. Every time it. At least I tend to believe this in what I've watched as a broker and and a home builder and stuff. Every time we take a house down. Now, out in the neighborhoods, if you will. Lot of times we're taking down a house that is crowded next to another one. Or one on each side. You take the house out of the middle, if you will. And then divide the land between the other two. The of where you took the building down. You've created a place possibly for garages. Places for people to live. Um, with a little more room around them. Getting cars off the streets in the neighborhood. You create a lot of benefits with that demolition of thinning out the housing in our present housing areas. And land has become much more important. And I've noticed that in a lot of cases, the land that's really be taken now has happened. Because people have bought a new lawnmower. Now that you can ride on and goes quickly and you cover your big lawns faster than you could before. Um, using it with a reel mower, do your uh, reel being R E E L. In the original spelling, um. You you know, there's just so many changes that have gone on and affect how we live in the neighborhoods. So I look at the mitigation as being highly important as to how the neighborhoods rebuild. And I've seen enough of what's happening around in the city now to know that that. Reasonable thinking and 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 things to look at. So the mitigation is very important. In many ways in rebuilding the city. They have it as a place not only where people can live, but want to live. So. Lot going on. It's a much bigger picture than just the Arcade Building.
Right, and that's our job to see how the Arcade Building fits into everything else that's going on in our community.
Yep.
So I guess my my suggestion would be to, you know, ask them if they can. Increase that amount, um, if they're they're comfortable in increasing it and and sort of let them say what. Number um, that they can increase it to, or if this is, this is it. Um, I mean, I certainly don't want to discourage them from the. Project. Um, at the same time, I want them to just realize, you know, what the housing market and, you know, the. Number of units we have in Jamestown, uh, just so they can understand where, you know, where I'm coming from anyhow, that, you know, we we have a lot of. Housing and if they can increase that amount, then maybe they can, you know, provide other services.
Well, we could suggest again, asking them what kind of permanent longstanding services. Are you talking about to support the residents and is there movement in the figure that you cited? Um, I mean, we could present both of those to them and then adding this idea that in their mitigation plan. It would be used for stabilization, but if the stable is, if it's stabilization run by the land bank or whomever. Then, you know, they provide the money, but. We make the decisions how that money would be spent. So I I would suspect, you know, that I think, you know, my experience just talking with them was clear to me that they had read. Our plans and not to belabor that other project, but you know, originally with the other project. Um, basically, we were told that there was no neighborhood plan and I had to push back and say, yes, there is. Uh, you know, I was president of the city council and we unanimously adopted it, you know, as part of our comprehensive plan. Um, you know, so I got this crazy pushback. That never happened with home leasing. They read it and they understood it and they said, you know, we know that this is what you folks have to deal with. So I found them to be a lot more open. And informed than it was with Water Street. And and I don't want to malign those folks or belabor it. Uh, I think we finally got to a point where it was good, but. I I think what I'm looking for from the commission, and again, it's not a vote, is. I think I've heard several ideas that um, what I'd like to do, but again, it's up to you folks. Uh, is to go back to them and say, well, you know, we reviewed this, we discussed it, we agree with the spirit and we have uh, some suggestions that we would like to make. To improve the mitigation proposal. So that then they can come back to us and continue with the work on the project. You know, I I would, I don't want to lose this project because uh, I think this might be one of the best deals we've gotten. But doesn't mean that we can't work to make it even better.
I agree that that should be the next step.
I just have a couple of comments. Chairman, um, I agree with pretty much everything that's been said so far. Lots of good points were made. I think that this is a golden opportunity. Greg and and Jeff can. Can shine more light on this than I can, but I'd like to know how many times in the past two decades we've received any sort of. Proposal like this for the Arcade Building. Where somebody from out of town is coming in, talking about investing fifteen million dollars into it. And, you know, re- renovating that. I I would venture to guess that that hasn't happened too often and. Um, since I was, you know, maybe for the past fifteen years, since I've been paying attention to the building. It seems like it's been vacant, no activity, you know, we had the fire a couple of years ago where we lost the the adjacent building, so. It's it's screaming out for something to be done with it and we have somebody who comes to the city and says, hey, we we're thinking about putting fifteen million into that. Building, I think, I think it has to be viewed as a wonderful opportunity. That's not to say that, you know, on that basis alone, it should be approved. I'm just saying that I think it's. Maybe a once in a decade or at least once in a five-year period opportunity for us to do something with the building. I agree as far as the proposed, the the number itself on the proposed mitigation is much, much less than we asked of. Of Gateway on a, on a per unit basis, and so I have a bit of an issue with that. A couple ideas that I thought of in that regard are. That, and I I thought about this a little bit with the Gateway project, but it didn't, the conversations really didn't go in that direction, but the thought that I had was. Perhaps it's an easier pill to swallow for home leasing if it's something that's structured over a period of years in terms of the monies. That are being put into the stable stabilization fund rather than, hey, you know, give it to us all upfront and. Maybe they'd be be able to do a little bit more if if it was structured in that way. And the other thought I had was maybe we could put together a mitigation plan with the applicant similar to what we did in the Gateway Project. Where they make some commitment and it wasn't a very firm commitment last time and we can't, I I don't think we can expect much of a firm commitment, but. The applicant in the Gateway Project, if you'll remember, made a commitment that they would consider Jamestown for a a future project, you know, whether it be. Something done in the neighborhoods or a reuse like this, but maybe they could make a similar. Commitment to the city that they would consider us for a a future residential, you know, repurposing. Project, whether it's in the neighborhoods or downtown and and that's something that we'd be able to hang our hats on and and be be proud of. Um, those are the comments that I had.
When you say a theater project, John, are you talking then about maybe taking yet another building or building something new or?
Yeah, well, I think what was really nice about the Gateway Project, the applicant in that case was that. They said they were going to look at the neighborhoods, I think, and they were gonna gonna consider the city for what they called. A scattered site project and they were talking about investing in the neighbor, in residential properties in the neighborhood. I don't know if that's something that's up up the up this applicant's alley, so to speak, but perhaps it is. Um, and and maybe they consider making some sort of commitment like that to the city.
Well, I've been taking notes from all the comments. And um. I think uh, looks like I'm almost done with my semester. I have one more class to figure out. But I think I'm kind of free. Otherwise tomorrow, what I could do. Is I could take the ideas that you all have given me. Try to put them in the words that I understand as you told me. Um, send it off to Ellen who can then distribute it to you folks and um. If it gets your blessing, you know, not again, not through a vote, just let me know if you think this is, if I captured what everybody's bringing up. And then we could go back to to home leasing and say, look, we think this is a great project. I think your phrase, it's a golden opportunity is right. Jeff could certainly give more, much more perspective than I can. But certainly in my time uh, with the city, which is not as long as Jeff's, I don't remember anybody ever knocking on our door. Um, with a project like this that could solve a lot of different problems in what's emerging as an important neighborhood. So I'd be happy to. So I'd be happy to summarize all this stuff, um, get it to Ellen, have it sent to you and then, um. I I don't want to hold them up and I know, you know, the happy holidays are coming, but if you're all behaving properly, you should stay home anyways. Uh, so, uh, give you some, something to do, not that you guys don't have things to do. But then if if I could get it to Ellen and she could get it out tomorrow. Um, then I would say, you know, try to get back to us, um, I'm I'm ready to say within a week. Um, and then we could send it off to home leasing if that's acceptable to everybody.
It's acceptable to me.
And, you know, I know we all have different schedules and different commitments and.
Yeah, but we say we have a lot more time because we're not driving all the time.
I'm telling you, you're supposed to stay home. I don't always follow my own advice, but, uh, you know, I want to keep you all healthy. Especially those of us who are in our golden years, we gotta be careful.
I know, you're still younger than I am.
Well, I know, but I'm in my junior golden years, so, or silver. Um, but if that's acceptable, then I could type it up, send it to Ellen, she could distribute it, and if we could get comments back. Well, what's a week from today is what, the twenty-second? Um, and then, you know. I know during the holidays, sometimes things can slow down a little bit. Um, for lots of different reasons, um, but then we could set it up to home leasing and say, well, we had a meeting, this is our discussion. Um, how do you react to these ideas?
For them before the next meeting is is a great time goal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I would just put an artificial one week. Cause I think we heard everything, so, no, I know Regina's not here today, but. And, you know, Crystal wants to give feedback or. So that would be my suggestion, if that's okay with everybody.
I'm not a voting member of this, but I would certainly concur that I I think. You know, what hasn't maybe been mentioned enough is that this is a real high-profile historic landmark that we have a chance to preserve. And that's something we should, that alone is makes it worth.
Yeah, and I point that out in the mitigation and it is in a historic district, so. Things we want to encourage, but. But I know you're not a voting member, Tom, but we would want your feedback too. I mean, as a council liaison, that's important.
Well, I'd say we move forward with it.
Well, everybody okay with what I'm suggesting?
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, okay, good. So, um, I will make a note to myself that that's what I gotta do tomorrow morning first. So I should get it to you pretty quickly, Ellen. If for some reason something happens, which I don't think, cause I only have, I think only a couple of things I gotta do for school. I should be able to get it to you, um, in the morning. Must like go out tonight and party or something, but you're not allowed to, so.
Watch my inbox.
Yeah, stay home, Greg.
Well, actually, I can't tonight, but it's a long story, but I I'm perfect. I'm being safe and following all the rules. Okay, good. Anything else on the home leasing and mitigation before we move on? Make sure I don't lose those notes. Okay, so then the next thing is, um, um, the Jamestown small, um. Think I made a mistake at one point that I think Ellen may have corrected my mistake too. So, um, on the five G proposal for want of a better word and the ordinance that put forward, I had, uh, written down. Quite a few notes and then Ellen had added some comments as well. Uh, all in the hopes of trying to structure and build a better ordinance. I probably spent more time on this ordinance than I ordinarily would. Um, but it came to me at a time when I had had some time and had the opportunity to read through it. And then, uh, met with Ellen and Crystal and so, um, I guess at this point, um. Again, this is very similar to what we just did with home leasing. It's a discussion of, um, the comments that have made by myself and others, including Mike and a few, I think. Everybody probably weighed in on this, so. Um, I guess I'm gonna just open it up again to comments as to how we can move this. Uh, recommendation as an ordinance along.
When I read the the ordinance, the proposal. There's not much to it that I, or there's not much in it that I didn't agree with. It sounds like a good, good way to get it on the table, if you will, and even start some working with it. But based on the articles though, and a couple of other things that I've read. I think the ordinance is good to put it in as to how it would be structured, if you will, or put in place in the city. So there are things though, I think we still need to know more about it as we go along. And I don't know what those things are, but I have to listen to discussions and thoughts of others to really know. But it just doesn't feel like we've got all the information we should have at this point. But it strikes me though, as something we can get underway and, uh, and move forward with it. Five G sounds like it's gonna be an important thing and the way science works. By the time five G is really ready to go, they may have six. You know, I mean, science is fast and continues to move. Scientists are like planners, they constantly think and try to make things better. So I would say kind of move forward with it. They wasn't, I I didn't see many things in the ordinance that were. A real problem, but there probably is.
Yeah, I made extensive notes, but one of my, I think my major suggestion, if I was gonna boil it down. Was to change, um, the tone of the ordinance to say that this would be allowed. These, uh, small cell towers would be allowed in, and and one of the recommendations I made was to use our zoning map. Um, to say that this would be allowed. Any place other than R one or places of historic, natural, cultural significance. So, once you got approval, you know, from the Board of Public Utilities to put it on the utility poles. Or from the city DPW to put it on city buildings or other structures in the allowed zones. You know, you have to go through the permit process and whatever fees involved, but you wouldn't need action from us. Unless you wanted to put it in R one or, uh, areas of historic, cultural or national significance. And then I had asked that, um, one, they would come to us and explain why they needed to put it in one of those restricted areas. And then also talk about how it addresses the ordinance. But one of the things I had asked for, and I think Ellen had done some work on this, was. The ordinance keeps talking about, uh, the unique character of the city and, uh, vistas and views, but it never really explains what any of that meant. And so, uh, you can go ahead and get permission from us to put it in a restricted area. But then you gotta explain how this doesn't change what the ordinance referred to, uh, as the character of the city and the unique, uh. Um, history and it it talked, it it says a lot of that stuff. Which could be guidance for the commission, but it never really tells me, even if I just look at the. Uh, the first page, the rich history of a unique streetscape, I would agree with that, or the character of the city, I would agree with that. Or character designated districts or unique characteristics in history, it goes on and on and on about that. And we might all come to some understanding of what all that means, but that needs to be spelled out a little bit more in the ordinance. What is unique about Jamestown? You know, one of the things is the hills, but, uh, the trees, uh, you know, like. People are all upset about the trees that are coming down on Third Street and I understand that, but I I there. It talks about what's unique about us, but it never says what that means. And I I I think there has to be, uh, a description of what that actually means, cause it's used throughout. Um, but it never really, uh, explains what that might mean, and so then there's no guidance for the planning.
We can craft to really be in the, in the, um, preface of the ordinance. And so that the language that follows that doesn't need to repeat it specifically, but just supports that. And so I think there's, I think there's some reorganization of of things where where it can, it can be clearly established. Earlier, and so again, when it's referenced, it's very clear what it's referencing.
Yeah, because right now there's probably at least six instances just from a a quick count. Where it refers to this stuff, but it doesn't, it, I I think if we put, like you said, Ellen, a description of what it is about Jamestown that is unique. That we are trying to preserve in the spirit of the ordinance, then the commission has something to hang its hat on.
Right.
It's kind of like with the neighborhood plan, when we keep going back to mitigation, you know, it gives us something to guide our decision making.
Yeah, so I think it's a matter of just kind of reworking some of the sections if we, where we find things to be repetitive in sections. Whether it's it's, um, um, combining things with that, just so again, we can. Cut down on the the vague repetition of things and just make an establishment of things earlier.
Made me think a lot about current politics on the federal level. When I read that, it's like making statements of something that should be done with no explanations of how you do it.
Well, or in our case, no guidance as to how we would go about doing.
Yeah, so there's a lot to be filled in and that was, you said it a lot better, but that's a lot of what I was thinking. As I read it and what we, I felt we need to do, but you said it correctly.
And better. Yeah, so I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read through all the comments that are now in an email from me and Ellen.
I I can share those on the screen if you want.
Uh, we could certainly do that, uh, and maybe people have some other things that what they want to suggest. But, um, I think if you make the ordinance so that you're permitted to do it any place but. And if you want to do it in those but places, you gotta come to us and here's what you gotta do to guide us in making those decisions. Um, and if we use our existing zoning maps, which I think we should. I I think it makes it something very clear, cause if we say you can't do it in R one, well, then people know what R one is. And but you can do it anyplace else unless it's an area of significance. Because I think the ordinance originally sets special interest areas and, you know.
I think that's one of those areas that would be modified a little bit, again, because there's overlap and. And repetition in some places, so it may be eliminating language like that, that again. Reduces the need for an entire section.
Yeah, I think, I think in in the long run, it could tighten up the whole ordinance.
Right.
You know, one of the other more philosophical stuff that I brought up is that it kept saying. Uh, the BPU or the City of Jamestown and and changing hats to chairman of the the BPU board. You know, it's very important to understand that the BPU is part of the City of Jamestown. So I can understand where you need BPU permission to go on our utility poles, but you might need Jamestown DPW to go on to city buildings. And so I I didn't like this distinction because it it it's an erroneous assumption that the BPU is part of the City of Jamestown. And I just happened to, at least right now, have those two hats.
Greg, that was put in there intentionally because of the two distinctions. Just so there was no confusion.
Right.
We've had that issue in the past for a while, well, we got a permit with a BPU, but the city never got a chance to look at it or vice versa, so.
Well, and I want to make sure that we make it clear so that people know what they have to do. Um, but I, instead of saying the City of Jamestown, I'm assuming those permits would come from the Department of Public Works, right?
Correct.
So I, you know, one of the suggestions would be from the City of Jamestown BPU or the City of Jamestown DPW. That you have to get one or the other.
And or.
Oh, and or, are there some cases where you would have to do both?
Certainly.
Okay, then I think that also needs to be clarified in the ordinance, cause it's not right now, I don't think. So i- if there are situations where you need both, then I think we need to make that clear. Um, or I don't know, do you want, are all of them ands? Should we get rid of the or?
No, and that's part of the reason we put the, uh, uh, there's a a table in there that to help direct the, uh. The applicant to, who needs to look at what.
Okay, so the table would explain when you need both and when you need one.
That was the thought, yeah.
Yeah, and I I guess what I would do, because I didn't de, I didn't dig into the, um, the the charts and the tables and the appendix. You know, I I would just make it clear right there, you know, refer to this to know which one you have to get or both. Um, so it'd be crystal clear. So I I'm, again, I'm open to other comments, suggestions.
Is there anyone here who can comment on five G versus, you know, the fiber optics and which way the technology is going? Um, that, my thought is just that the technology is, you know, going just to five G or if it's. Be gonna end up being a combination of both, you know, could this ordinance work for both or is that? I'm just not sure what the difference between them is.
Well, there's prob, I think, you know, could talk about that, but I I think we want an ordinance for five G. And if at some point there needs to be an ordinance for fiber, it would probably have to be separate, but. I'm not as conversant on the technology.
I just know if five G was, or if you still needed. Connection devices on a fiber optic system throughout the city or not. I guess, just curious.
No, it's a good, quite, a good technical question, and you know, like, did you want to address that and?
Sure, if.
Can I just ask you again to state your name and your residential address for the record, please?
Yes, Yenel Cusiker, uh, one twenty, uh, Starboard Sideline, Western New York.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike, I I think you had an opportunity to look at the package that I provided in the previous meeting. Um, on small cells, there's an informational package, so, um, in there, I I I believe it makes it clear. In terms of the need for fiber, um, all of this technology, five G, four G, we all, you, they all utilize fiber, so that's an essential component of that. Uh, even though they're wireless, these antennas, but they do have to have a fiber connection. Uh, so, but this this specific ordinance is obviously will be addressing, uh, the five G deployment, a small cell deployment in this case. But, uh, and there earlier, there was another question, um, or a comment with regards to the need for. This technology, I guess, just, uh, the gentleman, uh, Mr. Harvey, uh, article. I'm not familiar with this study that he was mentioning in his letter, the New Hampshire study. But at the same time, uh, there are other studies that are that are out there. You already have the information in your informational package, but I can share some additional ones from different universities. Like University of Maryland, University of Pittsburgh, uh, there's one out of California, one municipality there conducted their own study last year. It's a fairly lengthy study again on, um, RF health and safety. So I'm not an expert, obviously, on this, but I can definitely share the resources that I have, uh, that I have for you to take a look at it. That's, um, if you're interested in looking at that information.
So you have information that in effect would say there is no harm to people to do this?
Correct, it's, studies are being continued and then there's a variety of basically sources that are out there from various universities and experts are indicating that. Um, the, basically disputing the, some of these, uh, sources that are out there indicating that five G harms, uh, people.
Right.
So are all the small cells connected via fiber optics then?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so fiber optics goes to every single cell that we put up.
Correct.
Okay, so they don't talk amongst themselves, they go right from, right from the device to the network, fiber optic network.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Could you send us through, uh, uh, email?
Sure, I will, I will send it to Ellen, um, and then she can, she can distribute that information, sure.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great.
Yeah, you know, again, in the interest of full disclosure, my brother owns a company, he he was up in Plasberg today when I called him. I I don't understand everything he does, but he's in in the communications industry and. And so I I called him and he was expl, cause he's actually done work on, for example, towers here down in Shakora County. And right now he's working up something up in Plasberg. He's done it all over the state and actually over the country, but. Uh, so I I presented that question about what harm could come from, uh, you know, five G and he said it's basically. Non-existent, um, and he. Um, and he said, there's probably more harm when I was talking to him from holding my cellphone up to my head. And, and even that isn't all that great. Uh, and he's not a researcher, but you know, he's in the business and he said, I, when I told him what Mr. Harvey said, he kind of, he dismissed it, but I, you know, I wanted to make sure that we certainly discussed it. So if you have access to those other studies, um, I think that would be good for us to know and us to look at. Cause we want to make sure we keep people safe, but.
Yes. And also it's, I think it's important to keep in mind that, uh, and I see Elliot is here. Um, if you go back to the 1996 Telecom Act and what FCC, obviously this is a federal law. Uh, based on that law, local governments cannot consider RF health concerns when reviewing an application for an FCC compliant facility. So this is not something, um, a- again, this is the law and, and no municipality can say basically, you know, we cannot ha- have this because we're concerned about our health.
Right. So we, we couldn't reject it because of that.
Correct. But aesthetics is one part which you are, obviously with this ordinance you're working on. But, um, on health concerns alone or F issues alone, um, you cannot, by law, you cannot.
Yeah. So we can't reject it because of that, but certainly there's no harm in us clearing the air and discussing it.
Right, of course.
Because of our concerns for the community and because our meetings are, uh, open to the public and, um, you know, because the newspaper often reports on what we do here. And so it's a good way to communicate to the public, both what you said and, and that, you know, we can discuss it, we just. And I, I think it's good to have that out there in the open. So that people can know that, you know, we did look into this and we can't stop it because of that, but there doesn't seem to be as far as we can tell, based on the studies, any real threat to anybody's health or wellbeing.
Yes.
Yeah. And so, uh, I think that information is helpful to have out there.
I think that's really helpful with, after the article that was written.
Oh, from Mr. Harvey?
Yeah. I mean, it brought up a subject and it was like, wow, I hadn't heard anything like that before. So it's always nice to get a response somewhere that might add something.
Absolutely. And we want to encourage public to comment and he did. And that's why I reached out to him by phone call, just to even talk with him, but you know, he hasn't gotten back to me yet, so.
That's where Siri comes in handy so much on the computers now.
Well, I, I could ask Siri's advice, but I won't.
Why don't ask the advice? Just send me to the proper place to get it.
Okay. Well, you know, if people comment to us publicly, I take that very seriously. Um, and certainly any of you want to reach out to Mr. Harvey or Senator Brel, I, I'd go ahead and do it. I just went ahead and did it on behalf of all of us to get those comments and people know, I, we may not agree with you, we may not even be allowed to do anything about it, but you know, what you have to say is important to us. I think, you know, as a courtesy, at least we all that, but sometimes we learn stuff that you don't know.
I know. It's, it's nice to hear things like that because none of us know everything. There's always something more to learn.
Absolutely. So I, Mike, did, did, you know, answer your question or?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
And also I'd like, I'd like to make sure that I shared, although there are a total of nine questions that were submitted, uh, uh, last month. And we, I addressed, tried to address those questions and submitted ahead, uh, earlier this morning, actually. I'm hoping that everybody had a chance to see those.
I believe Ellen gets forward that on to us.
Uh, if, if any of that stuff does not make sense and would like you, uh, discuss it any further, I'm happy to do so either today or in, in written communication. So.
No, and thank you for.
And part of the reason I want to mention that, uh, there's a lot of stuff that most of those questions, uh, you'll see that I'll keep referring to the MLA. And Elliot, I see he's on the call. Uh, we've been working on this for some time now. Um, so it's already addressed in the MLA, uh, the master, master license agreement that we've been working on. Uh, that's part of the reason why I didn't, I provided sort of, uh, short answers, did not go into detail because it's already addressed in the MLA. So that's probably, perhaps that's something else that the, the, uh, the committee may, if I may suggest to look into. Uh, because if some things are already addressed there, uh, you may want to take a look at it and make sure. Uh, the, the, it's, the code is actually, uh, you, you're not repeating what's already on the MLA.
And as the town of Amherst, that's code and that's.
That is the code. Yes. That's not, that's not an MLA. That is a code. In fact, uh, both carriers, AT&amp;T and Verizon worked on that. Uh, they had a similar approach to what you're doing right now. They opened up for, uh, comments and we were able to provide comments and it was a long process due to the COVID-19. It took some time and they were not able to get together, but, uh, just recently last month, they were able to vote and, and, uh, pass that. That's part of the reason why I wanted to use that as an example. You can take a look at that. It's available now.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you for all that.
Greg, I had a, moving on, I had another question about, in your notes, you have location requirements and it says new poles and support structures. Will be avoided where technically feasible and wondering if you, you said define technically feasible.
That, that was me specifically.
Oh, okay. Ellen, I'm sorry, was your?
The green is me.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, mine's not color coded, but this started to become a joint effort. So I made some proposals and suggestions and then Ellen was trying to help us make it more clear.
So I'm just saying that, that, that needs to be articulated.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll have to kind of figure out what those boxes are.
What that means. Yes. Okay.
Does anybody else have any comment on the ordinance or my comments or anything Ellen has supplied or, uh, anything Yanelle brought up or?
I had a quick comment, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Uh, I don't, uh, it's possible that this has already been addressed, but I'm looking at the version of the ordinance from the 17th of November that was sent around and I just had the general question of, um, it sounds like we are requiring concealment and, and several other measures in the ca, in cases in which these small cells are being located in. I think you referred to them as special, special interest areas or something like that.
Well, the, the, the ordinance said special interest area and I changed it to areas of cultural, historic and natural significance.
Okay. And, and so my question was whether we've considered requiring those same concealment and other measures in situations where the small cells are being placed in non-preferred locations. And, and if we haven't considered that, why not?
Yeah, I think that's where some of this overlap can be addressed. So there isn't, there isn't a non-preferred and a special interest that we'll find, we'll find a way to address. It is either permitted or not permitted.
Right. And that was one of my suggestions that if there would be permitted areas and non-permitted.
Yeah.
And still do it in the non-permitted, but you'd have to come to the planning commission.
Right. Right. So we would do a way, it's a little bit of duplication because like makes it a little confusing. So it's kind of, we can change, change some of that language.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
So the, the issue is going to be, and I don't know how we're going to handle this, but again, we can always have more discussion. Uh, we want to get this done. We want to get it done in a timely manner, but we want to get it done in the best interest of the, the city, obviously. And so, uh, uh, at some point, I think this has to be rewritten. If we're have a consensus about all these comments. And I don't know if that falls on Ellen. I don't know if it falls on Elliot. You know, I made suggestions as to how I thought the ordinance should be written to best serve our interests. But now I think there's a spirit here, that there's a consensus, then I think we've got at some point, at least the beginning part of the ordinance. I, I didn't focus a whole lot on the technical stuff. One, because some of it is beyond my ability to understand. And over the summer I had long discussions with Chris from, um, the BPU, uh, staff about the technical stuff and he was very good at explaining to me as he always is because stuff with the BPU always gets very technical, especially anything to do with communication or electric. And, um, Chris has been a great tutor on all that. Because I needed to learn a lot, but at some point we got to rewrite this beginning part of the ordinance and I don't know if that should, where that should fall. I made my suggestions. It's not, and, and as I tried to explain to Ellen, I said, you know, I, I'm not your boss. You don't need another boss. You already have a director of development. You got a mayor. That's not my place. Uh, I'm very respectful of that. I'm just here to bring a consensus to us so I can say, well, here's what I would do. From my perspective as a ma, uh, as someone who has a master's in urban planning and a jurist doctor, I don't practice law, but I do a lot of work in it. So here's what I would do. But, um, you know, it's got to be what the commission wants to do. And then of course Ellen also has her, uh, technical expertise in planning. So. I guess Ellen, were you saying that it's falling on you?
I, I think this is something that Elliot and I can, can, can coordinate on and kind of get a, get a point of departure as to where to go from here.
Okay. And it's not my job to tell Ellen or Elliot what to do. I'm not your boss. I'm just a public spirited citizen. Who probably would like to tell you what to do, but is respectful of your positions.
Is there something we could do though in this communication? That might just, uh, include just more, more emails or things that happen and just distributing information so that we don't get it kind of like all at once.
Uh, well, it's like when I made the suggestion about the home leasing mitigation to get it done so Ellen could get it out to you tomorrow. I usually don't get people asking for more emails. It's usually the opposite, but I understand your point, Joe.
Yeah, it's just easier. I'm, I, I work on similar kinds of things and not exactly all the time and it's easier if it's an ongoing thing rather than a once in a while thing.
I, I agree, especially when it's something as complicated this or even as complicated as the arcade building.
Yeah, that as well as the ordinance.
Yeah, that's why I like to, um, you know, I made my comments and then I had a meeting and then we distributed them and you know, I see this as an ongoing process. So, um, I, I think I understand what you're requesting and I, you know, like I said with home leasing, that's what I want to do.
If more comes out on email, I'll be happy to read it.
Well, and, and I know you do, and you always make good comments. So that, you know, as do everybody. Sometimes at the meeting, sometimes between meetings, um, and that's great.
It's enjoyable to continue learning.
Well, and I always prefer in this position or my past positions, uh, top rate on a consensus model. We work together to get to a point where we're all comfortable with.
Yep.
So I guess we're hearing that Ellen and Elliot will try to work this out. And then when you've got something, you can get it to us.
You hear correctly. Yes.
Okay. Uh, yeah, my hearing's still okay. Um, that's good. And then, uh, you know, we'll be discussing this again at the January meeting. I don't, I don't know how soon we'll get to the point of recommending to the city council. Because we just made the recommendation, the council still has to act on it, but having Tom here as the liaison is very helpful because then you're aware of everything that we're bringing up. So I don't know. Is there anyone else who wanted to comment on this? Or ask a question? Uh, so I guess Ellen and Elliot, do you have any idea when you might be able to get back to us with, uh, change in the ordinance?
Well, uh, give us a chance to coordinate and we'll try to figure out some sort of timeline.
Okay. And I'm not trying to put you under some kind of time pressure, but you know, you obviously are well aware of when we meet.
Yeah.
If we, if there's a chance we could get something before that January meeting, that would be fantastic.
But we'll, we'll kind of figure out what our.
Yeah. And I, and I know you both have other things to do. I understand that, as do I, as do, as do we all.
I think it would be ideal to have something by the next meeting, just to keep the momentum going.
Uh, yeah, I would agree. And then hopefully we'll get a response, even from home leasing, once you guys all respond on that mitigation proposal. We'll just keep trying to move things along. Anything else from anyone? Okay. Well, um, stay safe, enjoy the holidays as best as you can. And then, um, you feel free to communicate with any and all of us, email, cell phone, whatever you want to do. I hate texting, but feel free to call me. Uh, you know, feel free to email me. My semester will be ending soon, but I'm kind of in touch. So, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Uh, moved by Jeff. Can I get a second please? Okay. Moved by Jeff Nelson, seconded by Jeff Lehman. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.
Thanks.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Bye bye.